Good morning, everyone. It is 8:30. I'll call our meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first item would be in approval of the agenda, and I would ask, please, that we remove number two from the agenda this morning. We will receive that update at a later time.
Move to approve agenda with that change?
A motion by Commissioner Kaylee to approve with the addition or deletion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. The citizens to be heard portion, are there any citizens in the audience wishing to speak to the board on anything that are not on the agenda? Steve, have we had any correspondence for this item?
We have not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I know last week we had talked with HR about the ability for citizens to provide feedback through an online forum. Is there a spot on that forum to address the board with that concern?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have a specific link that will provide the request to come before this board.
Okay, thank you very much. We're a little ahead of schedule in terms of, sorry. The next item would be the payment of the bills and vouchers. We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item would be our meeting minutes from the March 1st, 2022 minute. We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve the minutes.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Rhonda, we're a little ahead of schedule. Are you ready for your third item? Okay, thank you. Number three would be a request to fill a vacancy for a social worker position in your child protection, child welfare services division. Our social service director, Rhonda Porter, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Yes, I have, um, we have a retirement in our disability, oh, sorry. There we go. Yes, we have a retirement in our disability services area effective June 1st, so we're appreciative that she was able to give us a nice, long notice for refilling her position. She is one, we have one staff that manages a pretty large caseload that's under a contract with one of our health plans. She is our one and only, so we have all of our knowledge and expertise in that one person, so it's going to take a little bit of time to transfer that. But this position pays for itself based on the reimbursements that we receive under that contract. So I'm requesting approval to fill that position, and if there was any internal interest, permission to backfill.
Okay. I did highlight your, the first request on the agenda, so just for the board's knowledge, this is that second piece.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. The request to fill the vacancy for the social service worker in the disability service area. This is a budgeted position. We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve the request. Commissioner Gross, does that include backfill as well?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion?
Rhonda, how much overlap are you planning to have on this position to get that person trained in?
It would be nice if we could have about three to four weeks. Her last working day, let's see, I do not have that in here, but she is backing up her vacation, so her last working day will be in May, so we hope to, yeah.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Request is granted. Your next item would be the child protection, child welfare services?
Yes, thank you. Okay, this position, we had a resignation. We had a, have a staff person that's been with us for a couple of years here. She moved to Fergus Falls and has been commuting, and unfortunately, they had a child protection position open and scooped her away from us. So, nice for her, but disappointing for us that we are continuing to see some turnover in that ongoing child protection area. So I'm requesting permission to refill this position as well. This position does earn some revenue based on activity and dependent on the client eligibility, but there is some revenue that comes into this position as well. It is budgeted, and we would expect to see some budget savings just with likely hiring on step one, where this position is currently on step four. So I'd request approval to replace the position with backfill should there be any internal interest.
Okay. Board requests? Discussion? Move approval? We have a motion by Commissioner Kaylee. Commissioner Kaylee, does that include an option to backfill as well?
Yep.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Thank you. Okay, Rhonda, your annual social service update.
Yes, and I am sorry, I did not get my handout in the pocket, so I will.
Thank you. That's okay.
Okay, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I thought today I would, I didn't bring my nine division managers with me with 10, 15 minutes. I thought we will spread their program updates throughout the year. In April, you'll be hearing a little bit more from our child protection unit, with April being Child Abuse Prevention Month, and in May, with Mental Health Month, you'll hear a little bit more from our children's mental health and our adult mental health division. So today, I thought I would just do a high-level overview, talk a little bit about our, how it looks like our budget will end for 2021, and then I thought I would share with you some information about performance measures that we have with the State Department of Human Services. So, slide number two, just again, gives a little bit of an overview of our department, and I apologize for the small type, but we have 131 full-time employees in our nine divisions with one.
Rhonda, I have one question really quick. Is this online at all?
It is, it is not.
Okay, that's fine.
And we have one variable hour position. We have our nine divisions, 10 department heads, or 10, nine supervisors, and myself as a department head, and then you'll see the nine divisions listed there. One area I would highlight is our financial services division. Jamie Stewart is our supervisor. We have 30 full-time staff in that unit, and we do have three leads. However, this is an area I don't, if you remember, in times past, we used to have two supervisors and one lead, and restructured a while ago when we had a retirement, and moved to one supervisor and three leads. While we are seeing the positive of that restructure, we're also recognizing some difficulties, and so we're going to take some time this year to maybe evaluate if we think a different structure, organizational structure might be helpful to that unit, but we're pretty high with supervisor-to-staff ratio in that, in that area. We're all over in the family service center, first, fourth, and fifth floors. As you know, Sandy's unit, our child support unit, has been on first floor, and we are moving them up to a fourth floor, that west wing. We're excited about that opportunity and that move for them, a little bit bigger space and an opportunity for us to have a little bit larger meeting room so that we can bring more of our groups together when we get through this pandemic. So the only division we will have on first floor then is our financial services division, which does make sense because it's one of the highest traffic areas, so they can come right in the building and meet with that division. In addition to all of our staff, we have over 50 contracts with community service providers, and we have nine contracts with the state of Minnesota for various grants that flow through our budget or that we administer. And as you are all aware, most of the work that we do is mandated by federal law statutes or rules. So we follow a lot of those mandated service areas. Second page, slide three, is just a snapshot of what our revenues are looking like for 2021. A little over 26 million in revenues. You'll see the tax levy, what we levied was a little over 9 million, but we also received some of those homestead credits and those kinds of things, so those are all lumped into the tax levy and credits. And then you'll see what our federal, state program aid and miscellaneous revenue looks like for social services. Slide four is just a visual of what our administrative costs are in our three different budget areas. So the first one there in our income maintenance, that is all of our financial services division and all of the administrative costs that go along with that. And you'll see what the cost was for 2021 and what that revenue looks like. In the middle section there is our child support area. You'll see our, our costs. The red is the revenue. So you'll see that the gap between our costs and the revenue is where that tax levy makes up the difference. One of the things in our child support area, some of the expenditures do fall in the income maintenance area, so it's, it's just the way they come into our books. So overall, when I talk about the 50% federal reimbursement and the 66% federal reimbursement, that's what you're seeing in those revenue areas. And then the last grid is our social service, so this is all of our social workers and staff and supervisors in that area. And you'll see the red there is a number of different revenues, but it's all earned revenues based on their work. So it might be real direct work with clients that they actually bill and get reimbursed for, or it's allocations that go directly to administrative costs. The next slide, again, is just kind of a visual of our, in our social service budget, our programs are broken out into specific brass code areas, and that's how we report our activity to the Department of Human Services. So what I wanted to just visually show you there again is that discrepancy between the expenditures and the revenues. Again, that's the majority of where that tax levy fills the gap. And you can see children's services is a fairly large gap, mental health is a fairly large gap, so when we levy, most of a good chunk of that levy filters into those program areas. Just to highlight a couple, county-funded burials, the second one over there is all county levy. You'll see, we spent about 160,000, collected about 20, so we spent about 140,000 in county-funded burials for 2021. So it kind of goes likewise across. Children's services, that's where the majority of our out-of-home placements are, along with some of them in the mental health. So our biggest expenditures that are levy-reliant is out-of-home placements and the cost of care for adults in state-operated programs. So we probably spent about $800,000 in that adult mental health area this year, and that's reflected in that mental health expenditure line. So, yeah, so just a snapshot of, of those. We will end up.
Rhonda, if I may, just interrupt and double-check that anyone have any questions on some of the information. Commissioner Kaylee?
Yeah, I'll interject something with that out-of-home placement. So, one of AMCs, and that's the Association of Minnesota Counties for those listening, one of their areas that we're really looking at is when we have somebody who does not meet medical criteria for a placement in, say, a state institution. Is it correct, Rhonda, that we are then responsible for 100% of their bill until we can find a different place for them?
That is correct.
And that all of that money goes into the state general fund?
Correct.
And so, one of the ideas that commissioners, and I know the social services professional organization is looking at is, can we use that money instead of putting it into the general fund to build out our capacity for beds in greater Minnesota?
Yeah, absolutely, and I know, Max, our association would support that as well. We, we were hit particularly hard with that issue in 2021. We had one individual that probably cost us around $80,000, just because of that does not meet medical care issues. So we had a number of those this year that impacted that budget. Fortunately, our out-of-home placements were, were down a little bit from budget, so those two issues kind of evened themselves out a little bit. But, but yeah, that's definitely a concern that we have.
Any follow-up? Any other questions?
Okay. Okay. We will, although we're still kind of finalizing some of the budget numbers and had to do some manual calculations based on what we know is yet to happen, we, it does look like we will end up with revenues over expenditures for 2021. And so I highlighted some of those primary areas that are impacting that. One of the things I like to do at the end of the year is look at what we budgeted for salaries and benefits and then what we actually spent. And you'll see that we actually spent about 221,000 less than what we budgeted, so that falls into the bottom line. We had 12 resignations in 2021 and four retirements, so some of that is turnover, people starting on lower steps, gaps from when the person leaves to when we hire. We did notice, and Darren and I looked at this, that the changes the county did in the health insurance is impacting our costs as well. Again, if we have somebody that's been here for 20 years, they were grandfathered into some of those health plans, and if we bring somebody in new in those, you know, single coverage, we're saving some, some funds there. So about 221 is the impact there. As most departments, our staff have not been attending as much in-person trainings, they're not traveling as much, we're still doing a lot of remote work in some of our program areas. So we actually had a savings in those areas of about 117,000. Happy to report that our out-of-home placements were less than budgeted. We budgeted, we budget a net levy, levy impact of 2.5 million. We spent a little over 2 million. Combination of reduced costs and some increased revenue, so we did have a budget savings of about 465 there in out-of-home placements. And then, one of the things that we, we knew anecdotally we were struggling with in 2020 and 2021 was some of our purchased, what we call fee-for-service contracts. So it might be that we make a referral, for example, to the Village Family Service Center for a family that's, that's in our child protection system. Or we might make a referral for a supervised visit, or respite, or what we call semi-independent living skills services. The provider provides that service and then bills the county. Well, what we're finding with COVID, staffing shortages, applicant caution about direct face-to-face services, we're really seeing where some of those contracts went underutilized. And I anticipate about $400,000 representing maybe 10 or 12 different service areas that we're going to see some reduced expenditures in. And, you know, really, this is not a good thing, you know. In a business, you might think that's good, but in this situation, it's really not, because what that tells us is that we had people out there that needed services that perhaps weren't getting them, or weren't getting them to the level that we felt they were needed. So those are areas that, of course, we'll be looking at as we do the 2023 budget, but we did, did see some savings there.
Okay. Commissioner Campbell does have a question.
Rhonda, in regards to what you were just referring to with the services that might have been related to not being able to have face-to-face contact or what have you, you mentioned that that's not a good thing. Some, was there other areas, were there other areas that we saw an increased cost due to having to take other measures?
Well, we definitely have seen an increased cost in our adult mental health, that area. We budgeted, we actually went about 300,000 over in that area, but I did offset that with this amount.
Okay.
So, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So that would have, that would, that number would have been higher?
Yes.
Had we not had to
Correct.
Take other measures in other areas?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
All right. The next slide, and I won't go over these in detail, but what I wanted to just highlight for you in, on slides seven and eight is, we do right now have various performance measures that the state reviews our work, and the state has set various thresholds based on our work. And if we achieve, if we do not achieve those thresholds in those areas, then we are required to do a performance improvement plan. One of the pieces of that performance improvement plan is if we feel like over the year there were some extenuating circumstances that impacted our performance, we can request an extenuating circumstance review, and if approved by DHS, then we don't have to do a performance improvement plan. So you can kind of see the measures. We're, we're doing really well in, in the various measures. A few that are highlighted in yellow are the thresholds that we did not meet, so I'll just talk a little bit about those. Under outcome two, measure one, the percent of current child support paid, so this is a measure in our child support division. We are just under that threshold. To be honest, this is a threshold we have not met over the last few years. And however, this is not inconsistent with what other border counties are experiencing. When we're collecting child support and maybe the, the non-custodial parent resides in North Dakota, we don't have a lot of control over those orders, how much is being ordered for the non-custodial parents to pay. Some of those orders are inconsistent with the ability of the non-custodial parent, so if we can't collect it, that impacts our performance measure. So that is primarily one of the issues, we're not meeting that measure. I do know that Sandy and her staff, along with the county attorney's office, has attempted conversations with North Dakota on how we might work on some of these cases. It's pretty complex when you're dealing with different courts and systems, and I'm not sure that we're going to make an impact there, but the state is aware of why that threshold is impacted.
Just a quick question, so, so when we aren't, when we are not meeting those percentage performance measures, recommended percentages, does that have an impact on our ability for financial support?
No, these measures listed on seven and eight do not have fiscal withholds. However, the statute language talks about if you do not meet the threshold for five consecutive years, then DHS might work with you on other, work with you to come up with other strategies. They've been working with us for four or five years on this measure. I think what's probably going to need to happen here is they're going to need to consider some of our border counties as extenuating circumstances.
That's what I was wondering, if this isn't something that should become a topic of our border cities legislation that we have.
Yeah.
Oftentimes, there's other things that we have border cities, but you don't often hear about how it relates to social services. And, and what happens in North Dakota, on the North Dakota side and here, can be quite different.
Right.
Close by, we're a county in the center part of the state won't have those issues.
Correct. Yeah, and, and that issue, so I would, I would agree with that. That issue relates to outcome three, measure one, our difficulty in that area as well. This has to do with the percentage of days that children spend with relatives when they need to have an out-of-home placement. As a border county, we have, you know, grandmas, grandpas, relatives living in Fargo, North Dakota, you know, three miles away, and we have a difficult time getting them placed over there through what's called our interstate compact for placement of kids. So there's just a multitude of barriers. We, we work through them, but it's not always timely, and that does impact, that's one portion that does impact that particular performance measure.
Well, I would certainly hope wherever we have on our health and human services, is that Commissioner Kaylee? That's something that I think we need to be monitoring and watching for border city legislation.
Right, okay.
I agree. I think there are enough counties in Minnesota that may be experiencing issues like this, that I would encourage you to work with Commissioner Kaylee in terms of a potential AMC presentation on some of these issues. I, it's really difficult to have performance measures that counties within Minnesota have to follow, but the game is different when you're a border county, and certainly, it's not because we're not trying to comply or provide the best service possible, but.
Absolutely.
Okay.
The next, outcome four, measure one, this, in this area, we actually requested an extenuating circumstance, and that was approved, because we are normally in the 75 or higher percent here, but COVID and face-to-face had an impact on processing those food support applications within one business day. You know, people weren't coming in with their application where it could process it right there. Some of those were mailed in, and so that was an impact. So this performance measure, I'm not concerned about us meeting. We, we have met that in the past, and the state did approve our circumstance there.
Rhonda, can I ask a question on that? I know we worked through a lot of requests to make sure that seamless virtual transactions could happen with documents. Were any of those actions or programs approved? Did any of those help with that measure, or is that snap piece different?
The snap piece is really different. However, we do have online application tools that our applicants can make. So, and they're out there on our website, and so that certainly has made a difference. This performance measure is related a bit more to emergency food support needs right now, today. And when they, when our doors were open and they could walk in and bring that application in, they could see an eligibility worker right that day, but they've just been brought to us in different ways now, through the mail or through the online application tools, so that one-day process just isn't, wasn't happening. But again, we, we've got the tools to make it happen. We, I'm not concerned about it going forward. I think it was really COVID-related and like many counties experienced over the last two years. In the last two performance measures on slide eight, these relate to child protection. These performance measures, we have met. These performance measures, we have met in the past before. Our, our performance slightly under the threshold, again, is related to COVID, um, the lack of being able to seize, um, some of the folks face-to-face, more of the remote work happening. So I'm not concerned about those performance measures either, we've met them in the past. I believe on both of these, we have extenuating circumstances approved as well, um, for, for these measures based on those factors. And just at the bottom of slide nine, um, it kind of relates to performance measures, but we have a host of various reviews and audits throughout the years of our programs. We have, um, Indian Child Welfare Compliance Case File Reviews, we have Child and Family Service Reviews, uh, we have DHS comes, comes out and audits our childcare and foster care licensing, um, they do reviews of all of our home and community-based service administration, um, food support program is, is audited, Medicaid and TANF and, um, any, uh, health plans that we're under contract with, they come out and review case files as well. So just wanting to highlight the number of various reviews that we have, some of them are quite in-depth where they interview clients that we serve, they interview stakeholders that are a part of our system, for example, schools and law enforcement to get feedback. They look at best practice, they look at, um, you know, so it's not only just compliance, it's best practice and how we serve, uh, people in our systems. And, uh, we've, we've, we've done really well in those reviews and, and oftentimes have highlighted some really nice, uh, practice that, um, our agency is involved with. Um, so just moving on to slide 10, uh, we've got some challenges and opportunities, um, I already highlighted this, but the need for state-operated beds in our adult mental health area, for our civil commitments, uh, people that are under Rule 20s, that are in the jail, you've heard from our jail, the difficulty they've been having, and thankfully for our river project, that that's helping to address some of those mental health needs. We have continued need for, uh, residential services for our children's mental health. West Central is, uh, serving a lot of our high-needs kids where perhaps, um, uh, more residential mental health facility might be appropriate because we do not have beds that are being served at West Central. I think they're doing an amazing job at, um, at, um, meeting those needs, but long-term, it's been a challenge. Some of the provider staff sort, shortages which result in impact to services to our folks. We've got some increasing caseload needs and continued recruitment of childcare. So, all kinds of stuff happening, but lots of opportunities coming as well with our, um, some new funds in our homeless prevention aid, some of the opioid settlement funds might be opportunities for our county, um, our work with our, uh, detox and our, um, withdrawal management program, um, some potential future bonding money that maybe we might want to consider to address some of the mental health bed issues, um, is out there, so lots of things on the radar as well.
All right, Rhonda, are there any questions? Commissioner Kaylee.
So Rhonda, you brought up a lot of really important things that we should be, um, talking to our legislator about. Can you and I work together on identifying a few things that maybe I should give presentations on AMC this fall when we're setting platforms?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Rhonda, I also want to commend you for your help with, uh, with getting and procuring the five million dollar grant that we, uh, received for our crisis, or crisis substance abuse, um, center, and you've really been helpful in having conversations and, and as we look towards what the, the makeup of what that building will be and the services provided, we certainly appreciate your, your help in collaborating with different, um, organizations in terms of providing some mental health, uh, services to the folks that utilize that building as well. So thank you, um, for your past help and your future help on that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, I am encouraged to see your report. I know that, um, your department really serves the most vulnerable in our communities, and I know there are hard conversations and challenges in terms of how to best meet the needs of, of those people. I personally, uh, am encouraged to see the out-of-home placement needs or budget item go down, but, um, also know that sometimes that's not the whole picture because some of those young people were not, um, in school and didn't have, um, caring, uh, not caring, but didn't have adults around them that could report some of this maltreatment that, that may be, um, happening. So, I'm hopeful that we can continue to see those needs go down, but know that unfortunately, if they do not, you have, uh, amazing staff in place to help take care of them. And just want to give a shout-out as well to your employees. All of our employees really had challenges, um, continuing to provide great service during COVID and the, the flexibility that they had to show, and, um, you have such amazing people that work in your, your organization that, um, really deserve our appreciation and gratitude, so thank you to them as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Campbell.
Can I, um, Rhonda, I just want to go back a little bit. A while ago, when we were going through the remodeling of the West Center Regional Juvenile Center, and we had, we had established the, um, the one area for the older kids that, was kind of a, um, housing deal for them to get back on their own, there was some come and go on that part, and, and you felt at that time that that could, I mean, you were, you were, you were certainly, you know, an advocate for that.
Yes.
And how do you see that working? Is that, has that been working pretty well?
Yeah, it really has worked very well, so the independent living portion of that.
Yes.
You know, unfortunately, as we know, we do have some older youth where returning home may not be that best option, and our case planning with them is really independent living. What does life look like after school and, um, you know, into adulthood? And so that program has really benefited that group of kids, where we're really looking to employment, we're looking to driver's license, we're looking to, you know, those independent living skills. And that has made an impact on our budget in terms of where those kids might have been otherwise. It's also helped to, um, reduce, uh, movements in placements. You know, if we can shift the focus to, um, those independent living skills, I think for some youth, it settles them down a bit, it helps refocus, you know, what the ultimate goal is for out-of-home placement, and it prevents us from one placement, and it disrupts, and it goes to another placement, and it disrupts, and so I think we've seen some real positive impact.
Well, that's, that's great to hear, right? I know we've been working with our, our, you know, as, as a regional area, but that one, we kind of focus more on our Clay County kids.
Yes.
On the most part, and, and I think it's really good that, that they have that ability to have a place. I know there's some that don't qualify. You mentioned earlier in your report about the need for maybe some, uh, more separate mental health housing or something, um, in regards to kids, but, uh, I look at that, I look at that as a real positive, that.
Yeah, absolutely, and, you know, on the, the other side of that, in the, um, non-secure side, is we have the stabilization program, which is one-on-one staff. And unfortunately, we have some of our children's mental health youth in that program area, because the needs are so high. So, um, the programming that's been developed over the last couple of years is really in between this independent living and the stabilization, and it's, it's been really nice that West Central's been able to work with us on each kiddo that's placed there and what their needs are. They've really done a nice job of trying to adjust programming and increase programming where needed to meet the needs of those kids that, um, have a need for their facility.
Well, those services that are provided there for, for kids, um, we get accolades from all across the state regarding that facility and, and how well it's running, and the conjunction that it has between, um, the correction side of it for, on the, on the one hand, and then the social service piece that goes and gets involved with that, and it's. It's truly been an amazing program, and, and I'm glad that you've been part of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Right on time, uh, number five then is our Highway Department Request and Update, Assistant County Engineer Justin Sorem, good morning. Your first item is to approve a cost share with the city of Moorhead on traffic signal camera system.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, so the first item I'm bringing forward is a request to cost share a traffic signal camera system with the city of Moorhead. I did bring Jonathan Atkins with me, he's a traffic engineer with the city of Moorhead in case there's any specific questions on this item. So on our Millen overlay project this summer, we're going to be Millen, or we're going to be disturbing the intersection of Casaw 52 and 30th Avenue South, and we'll be disturbing the existing loop detectors in the pavement for the traffic system. In working with the city of Moorhead, um, we've gotten quotes to upgrade a signal system to a camera system, and this would be a 50/50 city-county split, and that'd be a total cost to the county of $23,662.50. In working with the city of Moorhead, we feel like this would be an improvement for both the city and the county, reducing maintenance of the system, and for future projects in the intersection and to eliminate the need to replace, to replace loops every time the intersection is disturbed.
Do you want to explain for the board what loops are?
So, that's why I brought John, because I'm not a (laugh) traffic signal expert.
So, the way that, uh, loop detection works is actually coil a wire, sorry, uh, it's coil a wire in the pavement, and so what it does is it detects the metal in the vehicle. It's not a magnetic thing, but it's, it's like a transformer. So when a car goes over this, it causes a change, and then the, the signal picks that up and goes, oh, hey, there's a car. So, what a camera does is it actually takes a picture, um, about every minute and a half of the background, and so when those pixels change, it shows that it's a car and it has some tracking capability and some advanced features. What it does, it allows us to, we can't, we'll have the ability to remote into that to look at the intersection and watch its operation through that. One of the other major benefits for me as a traffic engineer is the fact that it's 24/7 365 counts. Built into the system, it automatically counts every vehicle turning movements that they do, so it's a really good way to keep up and keep track of what's happening at that signal to keep it operating efficiently. Uh, the other really big benefit is, right now, if, if one of those loops that's in the pavement were to fail, I wouldn't be able to do anything with that loop until around May at the earliest because the ground's frozen. With a camera system, if the camera fails, I can go back to the manufacturer, get a replacement, send a guy up in a bucket truck and replace it. So for maintenance throughout the year, it's handy that way as well. Now, to Justin's point about ongoing regular planned maintenance for our roadway system, we're not having to cut anything into the pavement, the cameras are there all the time. If, let's say we had to close the northbound lane of Casaw 52 and go head-to-head on the southbound lane on the shoulder, I could take that camera and actually adjust where that detection is, so that way, the intersection would still operate as everybody's used to it operating. And then when the project's done, I could just reload the, the previous file and it would go right back to its original form. You can't do that with a loop because it's a hardware piece in the pavement. So there are many benefits, and then the other thing is too, is each time we disturb that intersection, we don't have to replace wire that's in the ground.
Yes, Commissioner Ebbinger.
John, uh, just address something that may be of concern to some of the public. This is not for enforcement of any traffic regulations or tracking of people, it's to maintain the traffic control devices at that intersection, correct?
Correct, it is purely surveillance, um, well, actually 99% of the time, that video signal goes nowhere, it just stays right there at the cabinet. When I do want to look at it, say I, I've got a complaint about, uh, particular direction's not working right, I'll be able to dial into it, bring up the cameras, watch it, and identify what's happening, and then that is a good maintenance tool because now when I go down there, I'll have a much better understanding of what's happening, but none of it is recorded. Um, ourselves and the DOT, neither one of us in, in Moorhead or even in District Four record any of the cameras that we have.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. We certainly had a good discussion about this at our highway tracking meeting, and we really felt that this was a, a good and appropriate investment, uh, moving forward, and our, uh, highway tracking committee recommends that we go with this request.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the cost share request.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Ebbinger, further discussion. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the request is granted. Item B would be the approval to advertise for the four bridge replacement projects.
Yes, so the second item is request.
Being here, by the way, sorry.
Thanks, John. Um, the second item is requesting approval to advertise for four bridge replacements with a proposed letting date of April 19th. So, there'll be four bridge replacements tied into one contract, two of them are county structures east of Saban, one on County Road 69, and one on County Road 68, and two township structures, one in Elkton Township on 140th Street, and one in Cromwell Township on 43rd Avenue North. We have been talking to the township and have gotten approval from them on their two structures as well.
And I did attend the watershed meeting last night, and you did get approval from the two permits for.
I, I would also like to point out that, uh, if you look at, we're going to be going over the, um, five-year construction plan, and on this year's plan, you will notice that they are items number one and two, that's on our current five-year plan.
That is correct, and the two county structures, we have gotten bridge bonding on those projects.
Okay, board, questions? Wishes?
Move approval to advertise for.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to advertise.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ebbinger, discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the request is granted. Item C on the agenda is the approval to advertise for bids for the Seventh Street Reconstruction Project in Dilworth.
Yes, so the third item is another request to advertise, as Jenny mentioned, it is the Seventh Street Reconstruct in the city of Dilworth. So the city has received a $1.25 million LRIP grant from the state of Minnesota, and as the project sponsor, we're required to advertise bids, hold the contract, make payments to the contractor, and provide any oversight that'd be needed during construction to kind of make sure that MINDOT specs are being followed. Um, this has gotten MINDOT approval, they have to go through the same process that we do, it goes to state aid, and they review the project as well. The proposed letting date will be April 19th, and we will open it at board with the city of Dilworth engineer.
Okay, and as I noted earlier, I attended the watershed meeting last night, and they did talk about this because that requires a bit of a partial abandonment on ditch 50 with that Seventh Street improvement, and there were no concerns, there were concerns, but no objections from the watershed.
Is there a?
Motion move ahead.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve the request.
I'll, I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Campbell, I believe he has a follow-up question.
Yeah, I just, I just have a question. So on, when, when we are the, uh, agency who, who files on behalf of these communities, and there's, there's work that's involved by your staff, is there, is there a process? Are, is there, are we compensated for that as a county?
So, we just did one in Holly on the Safe Routes to School project, and we, any technician time, we do bill for that. We bill any advertising costs, any costs from MINDOT, um, but any of my time or Dave's time, we, it's been a past practice that we do not bill for that.
That's good. It, but, and those, that's, that's all incorporated into their, what they anticipate to be their, their project cost?
Correct. Correct. And it's pretty minimal. I mean, there really isn't much time that our technicians really spend on the project other than entering it into our software.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right, well, we do have a motion and a second on the request. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Item D is the update on the preliminary five-year construction plan.
Yes, so I did hand out a copy of our preliminary five-year plan as well as a map. I'm going to go very briefly through each year of construction. If at any time you have questions on a specific project, please ask. So, in year 2022, the first two projects we mentioned earlier are being advertised starting next week. We've been working with the City of Fargo on project number three for a bridge removal. We have 22 and 1/2 miles of mill and overlay projects planned on Cassaw 12, Cassaw 52, and Cassaw 31, with quite a bit of federal funding on two of those projects. We have already awarded a contract for the grading of one in Oakport, as well as a bridge replacement. And then, there will be an urban reconstruct. We've been working with the Diversion Authority on urban reconstruct in Comstock. And then there will also be a turn lane reconstruction in Glendon on Trunk Highway 10. That is a MINDOT-funded project that we're working on the design with them. Any questions on this year of construction?
Not a question so much as just a comment in terms of, there are some fairly significant commuter routes that in southern South of Moorhead will be experiencing construction, which is very well needed. But I think it really will need some coordination in terms of, you know, specifically the 12 and 52 piece, and then a lot of commuters use two. So I would hope that we could stagger, however, certainly don't want to incur additional costs because of it.
No, so on 12, 12 will be open during construction. There'll be a pilot car. 52 being that it's more of an intensive mill and overlay. There will be sections closed. There is a pretty intensive detour that's planned. And then we're also going to be using our message boards that we purchased last summer to kind of warn people of the detours and where to go.
And I think because you do serve on the Transportation Technical Committee of MetroCog, I think coordination with them, I know that they've advertised detour routes on their social media and website before, and that would be helpful in this case.
Yep. And at last month's TTC meeting, we did discuss the 52 project, so-
Thank you.
And then I will move to year 2023.
We do have one more question. Commissioner Kaylee has a question.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm looking at your funding columns here. The column that you have for local funding on Ida, project number nine, is that coming from the Diversion Authority?
That is correct.
For that one? And then number 10, what is that local funding source?
So, there's $25,000 in state aid and $25,000 in proposed City of Glendon funding. That's basically for any costs that are incurred to move the power poles. And then the extra $350,000 is from MINDOT, because it is actually on a MINDOT road. So it's an LPP project is what it's called. We basically got funding from them because the turn lane doesn't function properly.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Commissioner Kaylee, I think, I think when you look across those columns, you'll note where there is a local impact is the county funding. That is, that, those in green are what we would do on a levy.
Yeah.
Anything that was local would be something that would be other.
Yep.
Yeah, it just, I just wanted a definition of what those other ones were, yeah.
Typically, there's, if there is funding outside, there'll be a note on the bottom of that page that'll, like, for example, in year 2022, projects 3, 9, and 10 all have funding that's-
Well, I missed that. Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
All right, year 2023. So we have three bridge replacements planned next year. If we do get funding from the state of Minnesota, we will be paving County State Aid 1, in which we are grading this year. And then we have 20 miles of mill and overlays planned throughout the county. One on County State Aid 3, one on 34, one on 18, one on 19, and one on County Road 26. And then we are also planning to reconstruct County Road 75, just east of County State Aid 11. That road serves as Northern's, Northern has an asphalt plant just off of that paved road. So we're trying to work with them and determine what the best phasing would be for that. So we're not shutting them down for a long period of time.
Questions? All right, next.
And then year 2024, we're looking at four bridge replacements. One of them does have federal funding on it, so that project won't move like the others have the potential to if we don't get funding for them, because that one is already in the STIP. We have 17 miles of mill and overlays planned, one on 26 again, one on 9, which goes from Trunk Highway 10 to Cassaw 18, and then one in the City of Dilworth on County State Aid 45. And then also the very last project, project number 29, is the 11th Street Underpass. We did increase our funding last year, funding commitment last year on this project to 1.5 million. I do serve on the CMGC meeting every week with this project, and we're expecting 30% plans to be submitted very soon. So it is moving forward.
I am really thankful to see the 26 projects, and I know it's a long stretch. And so, understand that it has to be multi-phased. I'm really worried about the ability for some of those sections to hold up.
Yes. And we're actually working on getting some testing done on that entire stretch this summer to make sure that the fix that we have planned is going to work and it doesn't continually, it doesn't start to rot the next year.
Right. And I really do appreciate that. I know that Northern Clay County has been really flexible in working with gravel companies. And I think gravel companies as well do their best to work with the citizens. But there are some sections that are becoming a safety hazard.
Absolutely.
So thank you for doing the borings and testing to make sure that what we have planned is enough. Questions? Commissioner Gross.
Project 27, where you're doing Highway 9 for two miles.
Yep.
Is there any, on the township road on 15th Avenue North, is there any that one mile that's going to be left out there yet connecting 15th Avenue?
And 7th Street?
And 7th Street through?
County State Aid 9. So that's a, I believe that's a, it's half Oakport Township, half City, or half Moorhead Township.
Yeah.
That mile is. So there's nothing planned there yet.
Yeah, really even the township's they planned on 15th Avenue there.
Oakport mentioned last year about potentially trying to get an LRIP grant to pave the rest of it, but depends if there is another LRIP funding opportunity. But it would be very nice with the 7th Street project going this year to see that mile get paved. And I know we would be in support of it, and I'm sure the Board would be too, because the traffic counts on the half a mile that they paved, I think almost tripled after they paved it.
Questions? Well, I know in the past, as we look at this, you've been really flexible in terms of working with the watershed and addressing any ditch needs and drainage needs. And so, as we continue to move forward with some of these longer stretches, increased coordination with the watershed in case they want to address culverts that may have collapsed or have some integrity issues saves us all dollars in the end, as long as they're open.
Definitely.
Okay.
And if there is any ditch cleaning, we typically don't show it on the five-year plan.
Yeah.
We'll go to year 2025. So there's another three bridge replacements on there if there is funding available. There's another stretch of, there's 12 miles of mill and overlay. One of the stretches is on 2. So after, after the tieback levy for the diversion comes through, number 2, we will pave from the limits of the tieback levy to the Red River, which then 2 will all have seen improvements from the Red River all the way into Barnesville. And then that's kind of our last stretch of 26 that year. That goes from Trunk Highway 75 to the Red River. And then, another stretch on 34 from County State Aid 11 to Trunk Highway 9. And then the very last project, project number 36, with all the pavement preservation that is on the five-year plan, we're planning a seal coat and striping project.
Questions?
And I didn't put any specific roads on that project, just because you wouldn't be able to list them all.
Questions? Any questions for Justin? All right. Well, keep up the great work.
One more year.
Oh, sorry.
And the final, the final year is 2026.
There it is.
There's three more bridge replacements on there. And then Fargo did submit an application to be for federal funding in the STIP. So we just put the North Broadway Bridge in there as a placeholder. Obviously, nothing has been decided yet. We'll continually work with the Tracking Committee and the City of Fargo on this. Project number 40 is a stretcher road that we have seen quite a few complaints over the last couple of years with all the heavy beat traffic. It is really narrow. It's only 11 and 1/2 foot lanes. Goes from Trunk Highway 336, just by Titan Machinery, all the way into Saban. And we're proposing a grading project in the year 2026 on this, which we would widen the existing roadway.
So I know that had been knocked down, I mean, it's wider than it was 20 years ago. So you are anticipating to widen?
To minimum standards would be at least a 12-foot lane and a 4-foot shoulder.
Well-needed. Any other questions?
And then, there is a mill and overlay planned in the city limits of Ulin. We have met with the city and we're working with their engineer just to make sure there's no infrastructure needs when we do go through there. And then, another stretch on 34 from Trunk Highway 75 to Cassaw 11 as well.
Commissioner Campbell.
Just a, just a note for, when you look up on the top right corner of all of these, when you look at the state aid allotment, if you look at the, this year for 2022, we're showing a state aid allotment of 4.2 million.
Yep.
And then in the remaining years, we're estimating 3.9 million. That number is up from-
3.7.
Million that we were, we had-
Projecting, yeah.
Projected in previous years for the five-year plan. We didn't, even though we're getting 4.2 million for 2022, we didn't feel comfortable suggesting that that would be the same going forward, especially now with gas prices the way they are. Their gallons might be down in terms of what's purchased. And that's where the tax is based on, is per gallon. So, and that's where that money comes from, so. So just a note that we're, those are all subject to some sort of estimated revenues.
And if you have any questions at any time, unless I know it can be rather intensive, reach out to me at any time.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, unless there's a 2027 that I missed, I think that's everything.
There is one that exists, but not in that packet.
And you aren't seeking approval for this? This is just a understanding of-
Yeah, we discussed it. Yep, we discussed it at the Highway Tracking Committee, and they felt it'd be good to kind of update the Board at where we're at. And we'll be looking to schedule a public meeting at the Board here in the near future.
Great work, Justin. Thank you so much. Our sixth item this morning is a request to move forward with HVAC control replacement project at the Family Service Center. We have our Facilities Director here with us this morning. Good morning, Joe.
Morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. Wanted to clarify on this project as well, too. This is an ARPA-funded, and it's a capital improvement project, but it is under the ARPA-approved category. So I did not note that in the memo. So wanted to be clear on that before we start here. So this is what's called the FSC HVAC Controls Replacement Project. Basically, it's a project that's split into two, made up of, made up of replacing all the motors on 10 of the air handlers that are in the Family Service Center, and replacing all the control boards that control the speeds of these air handlers, too. So, what I did is I split them both out, went out and got quotes for the motors alone, and then I went out and got quotes for the VFDs alone as well, too. So, I am proposing to move forward with Dakota Plains Mechanical for, on the motor portion of this, for $20,455. And then, request to move forward with the VFDs, Rick Electrics, at $36,900. You add the motors and the VFD price together, the low quotes, you get $57,355. We did have a budget of $50,000, so we did go over just a little bit on this line item. But within that ARPA bucket of money that we've been, that's been approved, I think, we'll be offsetting this through there, so.
Thank you, Joe. And I do know we've been under on some of the allotments that we'd had come to this Board before. So, there is some wiggle room because of that to cover the $5,000, or $7,355 over.
Correct.
Board, questions, discussion?
Make a motion to move in. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve, a second by Commissioner Campbell, just to identify the funding sources, capital bonding through ARPA.
Correct.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Your request is granted, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Item 7 is a request to fill a vacancy for a .6 financial assistant position. Our Public Health Administrator, Kathy Minkey. It is a little refreshing to not see five letters included in your agenda item this morning.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I brought the wrong information if I have to give an update. Okay, my request is, we had a retirement with our part, or our finance assistant position, .6, so it's budgeted. And so, my request is just to fill that vacancy.
All right. Board questions?
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ebinger.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Kaylee. Kathy, this is budgeted at a .6, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Request granted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item 8 is a request to enter into pre-design agreement for Crisis Abuse Substance Services Project. We have our Crisis Services Director, Troy Amundson, and our Administrator, Steve Larson. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you, for your consideration this morning is a pre-design agreement from Klein-McCarthy. If you recall back two weeks ago, this Board requested that we reach out to Klein-McCarthy to see if they would have time to take a, what a pre-design that we had originally done some work with for them back in 2018, when Troy and his staff applied for a grant through the state of Minnesota, at which time we didn't receive that. As you're well aware, Grant, Troy and his staff did reapply for a grant that was provided through the state of Minnesota and found out that we recently received that. And so in reaching out with, to Klein-McCarthy, I talked to Scott Fettig, who did our original design based on the Board's requests. This pre-design does include a two-story refresh, a one-story option, and then also a one-story with the ability to have foundation walls and ceilings that would allow for it to go to a second level. The contract has been reviewed by Mr. Melton. Mr. Amundson has also reviewed to ensure that the, the scope of the design for his needs are addressed. And with that, I would yield for any questions.
All right. Well, that is, I think, really good news in terms of time and dollars. Certainly, it's a great option. I appreciate the fact that there are three options that will go into the redesign. I think those requests came out of our work group that we had after discussing that. So thanks for keeping the options open there. So thanks for keeping the options open there. Any further questions?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Just to clarify, that's the $10,000 in any reimbursable expenses that had been identified in the contract. Do you have a funding source?
Madam Chair, initially, well, initially, we'll utilize the reserves. This would be something that could be funded through the grant dollars once they're secured.
Okay. Questions on that? Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Request is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine this morning is our committee reports. Commissioner Campbell. Ready?
I can be.
All right, thanks.
All right. On March 8th, we did have our Highway Tracking Committee meeting. We did talk about the outlying shops and the process and the bid openings and when the timeline for that. We did talk about the sign form and retiring. And we're, they're working on that position and any backfill that might occur. We did talk about the loops in the traffic issues that we agreed to with the City of Morehead this morning. And then we had, the most significant discussion was regarding our five-year construction plan of which we went over that briefly this morning. On the 9th, we had a Facilities Finance Committee meeting. And we, basically, we were, our discussion surrounded our automobile fleets. And Joe was looking at different alternatives regarding whether we should be buying or leasing these going into the future. There was, we asked, I think, for a little bit more information on that and, and that continues to be studied. There, there appears that under a certain contract, we could probably save significant dollars annually. That same day, then, we did have the Building Improvement Committee meeting. We got a report on the Family Service Center dental expansion. Think they're, they're running into a little bit of delays there, but they, they've wanted to, they put in a request to lease that space once our department moves out of there, moves to the fourth floor. They're looking at a six-month lease at a slightly reduced rate than what they would normally pay for on the first floor. We felt that that was an appropriate deal. I think that's going to be coming forward, I'm, next week to, to approve that. And then, of course, then, in conjunction with that, the fourth floor fit-up for Sandy Thorne's unit that's going to be moving, and I think they're looking at sometime between now and May being finally done with that. Do you have a question?
Yeah, on that, sorry, on that dental expansion, is that going to increase the number of clients that they're able to see through there? Or is it just more space? What are they looking at?
I, I would, you know, I guess I can't speak to that directly. I know that they're, they're, they're investing big time into the expansion. And I would assume if they're expanding that they're going to be able to probably serve more as well, but I
Okay.
I can't say for sure on that. And then we did have a, going back to my report on that, then we did have a discussion with the Attorney Expansion Plan. And I, I think what's going to happen on the first floor of this bill, on this building, where we used to have the jury room, there's going to be some, help me out, offices for, for victim, yeah, victim awareness, whatever. And then, and then the, we had some considerable conversations about the Government Center and, and they have some heating and cooling issues over there. And so we've looked at the process or recommendations on how to fix that with HVAC issues. So I think we're getting close to coming up with something there. We talked a little bit about the household hazardous building on East Hen. And we addressed a little bit, there was some issues or requests about a potential storm shelter out at the landfill. And then we're having the dialogue about a potential, what we're going to do with the DMV if, if the Morehead Center Mall is no longer available to us. And that's something that we have to be fast-tracking a, a plan there because I think our lease is, what, it got a year and a half left on it? And a year and a half comes fast if you don't have any place to go. So we have to make sure that we come up with something there. Then on Thursday, the 10th, I was in Fergus Falls for Lakes Country Service Cooperative meeting. That all, you know, that continues to go good. It was a good report. One of the things that, that they are dealing with there too has to do with insurance and, the company that we use right now in certain areas is Further. If that name rings a bell to you, they're the ones that, that handle the processing of our VIBA and HSA types of deals. And they're no longer going to have, they're no longer going to be able to do the VIBA, so we're going to be looking at having to switch. Lakes Country experienced that same thing. They are getting ready to move forward, I think, with the new contract with a company called WEX, W E X. You may also know them. They were, they had bought out Discovery Benefits was, which was a local area here. So, so that's something we're, we're looking at too at the county level. I think, Darren, I think you and, I think you're planning on having an insurance committee meeting coming up pretty, or, to talk about that? Okay. I think he's nodding yes, so. And then yesterday, we did have our American Rescue Plan, oh, excuse me. Then on Friday morning, we did meet with the city regarding the resource recovery operations and how that's going to be. And we had a good discussion with, I just want to, I remember from the city, Mike Reitz, Assistant City Manager, and Dan Molly were there. Heather Niemeyer and Chuck Kendrickson were there from the city council, myself and Commissioner Mojo and Steve Larson. And we kind of, we kind of hammered out the, what, what, what the operations of the, of that facility will look like. And I think we've kind of come to an agreement on, a mutual agreement that we would look at for a three-year period. But I think Steve will probably be bringing something forward on that for further discussion. But it was a good dialogue. And then, oh, and also Mayor Carlson was also at that, at that meeting. And then Commissioner Mojo, you might want to also comment to that too, but. And then, then on yesterday, we did have the ARPA committee meeting. There was, we pretty much were updating and talking about the presentation that we'll be putting forward with our work group today. In addition, there, we did have a, a new request that came forward with emergency, am I saying it right here?
EMS.
EMS, yeah. Emer, the EMS groups around the county and where they've seen an inability to be able to raise funds for their needs as a result of COVID. So we've had that discussion and I think something will be coming forward. There is a recommendation out of ARPA that's going to be coming, I think, next week on that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Ebinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the 9th, I virtually attended the Northwest Emergency Communication Board Meeting. I had a presentation from our System Administrator Brian Zastepil. There've been some concerns and this has affected the Morehead area a couple of times. He gives a quarterly report on issues involving busy incidents, which is basically when you, when an emergency operator pushes a microphone from the field, either police officer or firefighter or EMT person. And they, the signal is covered up because there's other signals that are out there that override it. And there were some concerns because we've seen a .04% incident on this, which is, is very small, but obviously, if they've got to rebroadcast a, a signal, that could be a problem. But the national average is .2, so we come in well under that. And even though we've had these incidents, particularly up on the pipeline when they've had a lot of traffic in a given area, it's not anything that's alarming. We approved the update plan for the Monoman County, which is wanting to be included in the armor system. They had some encryption and connectivity issues in their original plan that have since changed because they purchased different, more updated equipment. So the benefits of that equipment have been worked into their plan to bring them onboard. I had a discussion about Mr. Zastepil's reimbursement. He is our Regional Systems Administrator and he's had no increase in his reimbursement for what's basically a part-time consultant job over the last seven years. He's been paid $100 per hour. Starting this year, that'll be increased retroactively to January to 115 per hour. Next year, 120. And the year after that, 125. And this is within the budget and it's very reasonable. He is probably one of the best system administrators in the state. He's also the technical, the Operations Director for the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. I've worked with him since I got here and he's probably one of the most knowledgeable individuals on emergency communications in this part of the country. So we're lucky to have him. There's been an ongoing discussion about remote meetings. This board has 17 members of the RAC, who are the technical experts, and 19 board members from the county government and tribal government entities. That's 36 total. And if you look at state requirements for roll call votes, the meetings will probably go five or six hours. So we're trying to come up with some way to expedite it. It's a large area and it's out in Thief River Falls, so it's, it's a drive for a lot of We've had two inputs. The City of Morehead had a letter from John Shockley at Onsted Twitchell. And then one of the board members brought in MCIT's evaluation of requirements under state for conducting these meetings. And what we have determined at this point is all members in attendance will need to keep their cameras on so they can be seen to meet that criteria. At least one person must attend the meeting in person, which has never been a problem. Remote persons must state their location, and that's an address. Up to and including, if you're in a hotel room in Orlando, Florida, you've got to give your location. What will happen is there'll be a roll call vote for agenda approval. And all items will be listed on the agenda. All items that are going to be covered that day will be listed in the item, the agenda as consent, consent agenda and discussion items for each of those. They'll be discussed. We'll move on through what is effectively in a consent agenda. And then there'll be a vote to accept all of them, or any of those that have been removed will change the consent agenda. But at the end of the meeting, there'll be one vote. And that is how it stands right now. There's still flexibility to alter that. But one thing I think we might want to consider is to bring this up to AMC because this is just one board. It's, this is affecting a lot of people. If we go back to some of the procedures that we're in during the COVID emergency, it may be easier to conduct these meetings instantly. Right now, city board member Seljid, Seljidman and I have discussed possibly with any of the sheriff's people that are going to attend and Captain Swenson over at Morehead PD meeting at a location that the city will set up for remote. So at least we can do it on public property where we're at one location. But that's kind of something in the works that we're trying to get done.
Well, and two, we made sure to craft this room for needs, just like you say. And so certainly would make this room available to any that would want to tune in remotely.
Yeah, that's certainly an option we, we have, so. It's, it's a work in progress. I do think this is something, not in this session, obviously, but in the next session, we may try and get our legislators to look at to expedite this. It's, it's here. It works. I like the in-person meetings and I try and get Thief River Falls when I can. But this is a, a good example of a meeting that would be unwieldy under the current rules. And speaking of having to get to the next meeting, I left the meeting a little early so I could go to the Morehead Business Association following, or on the same day, on the 9th, for the presentation by Megan Kruger, the Director of the Morehead Library, and Tiffany Toss, one of the librarians. They, I'm on the, the Lake Ag C Regional Library Board representing the county. They did a great representation of kind of the history and background of our library system and of what's offered at, at the Morehead Library, the services. Well, a lot of people think this is a place to go to get books or maybe do a little research as, as we just, as Ms. Porter presented today. A lot of benefits are out there for people online. And not only can they access those benefits in the computers that are at the library, the staff there will help them figure out what they need to do. We have work for, workforce problems in, in our region. There are people out there looking for jobs, but the access to those jobs or the training for those jobs is going to be online. And the library addresses those issues. Just a lot of good work that comes out of there and they brought that to our attention. And then the big ask was a half-cent sales tax that's being considered in November. That's going to be for a community center and library. I think it's, that's kind of key into the downtown development picture the City of Morehead has in mind. They addressed that. It appeared, and I was glad to see, Morehead Business Association or Board, there's a member, a number of their members are already either active in this or are looking at it. So it's something that's going to receive some scrutiny and, and support if it, if it merits it. Also, with the assistance of Commissioner Kelly, we brought up the State Library funding issues that she presented in the recent AMC and made the people at MBA aware of that. And that completes my report.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Commissioner Kaylee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday, I attended our Adult Mental Health Leadership Team meeting to discuss our upcoming meeting, which will be this afternoon. If members of the public would like to join us for that meeting, it will be at 3:00 PM at the Family Service Center in Room 4. This is open to the public and it's just a discussion on how the public is accessing mental health services in the area. It's attended by providers giving those services and community members as well. Then Wednesday, the 9th, I attended our Extension Committee meeting. We had great reports from a lot of the program areas. I particularly liked Rosie Gonzalez's report. She works with nutrition with extension and she reported that she's been working quite heavily with Place for Hope and their food pantry, which we have supported, this board has supported with ARPA funds. She's working with them to make sure when folks come in, they're seeing the produce first and making healthy choices. So redesigning the setup of that food pantry to fit the, the MyPlate nutrition guidelines for families and making sure that there's, this, this, the setup is right for the produce and freezer materials so that food is keeping well and the healthy stuff is appealing and presented first. She also said that there's been a lot of interest in air fryer classes. She's been doing a number of those. And air fryers are great because it's reduced fat, cooking to get, but still get that kind of fried texture in your food, so. cooking to get, but still get that kind of fried texture in your food, so. Also, great reports from 4H, from Randy Nelson, working with our plant stuff, and I'm sure if I'm forgetting anything, Commissioner Mojo can fill in some more details there. Immediately after that meeting, I had our Cass Clay Food Commission meeting. It was one of the commissioner's last meetings on that commission. And he had some comments about, he owns a few small businesses in the food industry, local food industry in our area. And he had some great comments about how we, as a Cass Clay Food Commission, should be really taking a look at standing policies and contracts in our area and making sure that they are supportive of our small businesses in the area. He shared an example of, he makes soda pop for one of his companies, and he had worked with the Fargo Park District designing a custom soda for the Park District, invested a lot of research and time and other resources into the development of this custom soda pop, only to find out later that Fargo Parks has an exclusive contract with Pepsi, so that pop would not be able to be sold at any Fargo Parks. So sometimes there's these great ideas that we have that seem like they're really going to promote a local small business and be a fun thing for the community, but there might be policies or contracts standing in the way. So as we're looking at these opportunities, we should check into those things. He also talked about the farmers' markets and the wonderful partnerships that we have with SNAP and getting Double Bucks for those folks. It really helps our local producers to sell more of their products, and it gets it into the hands of families who are on some of those assistance programs, so it's just a win for everyone. Erica Frank gave a presentation on food systems language and strategies in our Clay County Comprehensive Plan Draft. One of the statistics she shared on that that I thought was really interesting, only four percent of producers sell directly to the consumer in our area. That was interesting. Thank you to her for participating in that and giving a thorough presentation. We also had a discussion on our process for writing letters of support for community projects. So the Cass Clay Food Commission is open to supporting grant projects that folks in the community want to put forward. For example, there's an AARP Community Challenge Grant Program that's open right now. If there are organizations or individuals interested in applying for grants, they should reach out to that committee well in advance of their grant deadline, so we can get them on an agenda to give a presentation, and then the steering committee would then sign, write and sign that letter once it was approved by the commission. We also heard from the Cass Soil Conservation District and United Prairie Foundation about some of their work in preserving prairie and soil health and pollinator habitat. The city of Morehead reported that they are looking at their herbicide practices and policies in public parks in the interest of finding a balance to allow safe foraging in park areas for things like mushrooms, wild grape leaves. There's a lot of community members that are interested in doing that, but the herbicide use can make those products unsafe to eat or perceived to be unsafe to eat, and so they're wanting to find a balance between maintaining beautiful park spaces that everybody can enjoy with limited weeds and also encouraging that foraging ability. The Morehead Farmers Market announced that they will be open on Tuesdays from three to six PM beginning May 31st, and that will be in the Yum Combs parking lot. SNAP, EBT, and Double Bucks are all available there. As Commissioner Ebinger reported, I did also attend that Morehead Business Association meeting. From the county perspective, folks from all over the county go to our Morehead Public Library for all of those services. One story from the last year, we had a gentleman in the county who used the library to study for his boiler's exam. He got all the materials he needed. The librarians helped him with hotspots so he could have Wi-Fi access at home to study, and so he got a great job with benefits, and it was something that his family hadn't had before. So that's just one example of how that public library is utilized for things beyond just reading materials or checking out a movie for your family. Also, from the county perspective, I did talk about that rural regional library basic system support piece because that is helpful for the longevity of our library systems as well as our county budget. If we don't see an increase in state funding, the library budget doesn't necessarily go down. It just increases the share that the county and our cities have to pay to keep those libraries operating as they currently are. So thank you to the Morehead Business Association for hosting that discussion. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Commissioner Gross.
Our last Tuesday after the commission meeting with highly tracking, which Commissioner Campbell has already reported on. I think that there, one of the things we have to approve, this public input meeting under that five-year contract, and that's going to be during one of our regular meetings that will be scheduled in the near future. Wednesday at the Wild Rice Watershed Board, routine things there permit, permits female buyouts and settlements, statement resolutions. They talked quite a bit on the ditch projects, the repair of ditches was a concern that it has, they have to, the cost, excuse me, the cost that's due to some of the repairs of the ditches are becoming greater, and they need to find something, the ought-to-do material that they take out of the ditches, they have to find a place to put it. And Monoma County Soil Water Conservation District requested money for projects. A lot of discussion on how to get the money on that one watershed, one plan. They had a lot of discussion on how to get that money to utilize for their projects. Thursday at the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, barely enough people there to make a quorum, but we only, there's a few reports there on veterans. Kurt Canagin report in Clay County veterans, we've got 3,800 veterans in there, and Cass County has 10,671 veterans. So there's a lot of veterans to serve in the Cass Clay area here. March 29th, they're going to have a Veterans Day at the Mort Legion. Just talking to veterans about benefits available to them. Then we had the Build and Improvement Committee on March night, also in the afternoon, which Commissioner Campbell's already talked about, so I won't go over that again. So, very good. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Last week, I attended the Soil and Water Conservation District meeting that was held on Tuesday because on Thursday, members of that board were at the Capitol to lobby for legislative priorities. We had a really good update on all of the work that they're continuing to do there. They did have a supervisor boundary change that was a follow-up to the resolution that was passed while we were at AMC, just moving the boundaries of the townships to make the lines of those districts more smooth, I guess is the best way. Did announce that there are supervisor elections coming up this fall, and they, Joel Hildebrandt had identified the 2022 outstanding conservationalists that will be announced soon. Had a presentation from Gabe on farm management and talked about the, there are so many different, MAWQCP, farmer certified, that Gabe is working with a Jim Lawn, the area certification specialist, that will give a presentation to the board next week. Did talk about the soil health program meeting and continuing to talk about the NRCS Local Work Group meeting that will be held soon. NRCS was the lead. Bob Guter was present to give an update from NRCS. And then talked about zebra mussels that are becoming an issue at Turtle Lake, which also court, was an agenda item that I talked about at the Buffalo Red Watershed last night. The Buffalo Red did receive a letter from DNR to cease the water release on Turtle Lake because of it being in infested water, so they're, they're dealing with that continuing. It's a hard time of year to receive those, continuing to monitor the levels of that lake, hopeful that because it is low that that won't impede property owners too much. But they will be sending a letter of correspondence to Turtle Lake residents to let them know. And as they continue to look forward towards mitigating that issue, we do have invasive species dollars that the SWCD has been allotted through us to deal with that, and will certainly have to figure out a remedy as zebra mussels are not disappearing anytime soon. I attended the Extension Committee meeting as Commissioner Kaylee talked about. We did have the selection of the 2022 committee chair. Derek Compton is now the, Compton, excuse me, is now the chair of that board. Did talk about their 2022 approved budget, which increases, reflects the increase that this board supported to one of the 4H coordinator positions. Did talk about the 2022 Farm Family of the Year selection that will be announced this summer, and there are emerging leaders, Corey and Ashley Hang from the rural Barnesville area that have been taking part in that leadership program. Such a great opportunity to highlight emerging leaders and ag champions within Clay County. Updates from 4H Youth Development on what is spark and what is the spark of the young people that they work with, and how do we continue to provide programming that helps encourage their spark. An update from Randy Nelson from Ag and Home Horticulture. He continues to be on the radio weekly and authoring so many different articles in terms of the issues within his department that really are the needs that the community are seeing, and had an update on Extension Master Gardeners from Kristen. Wow, Extension has really turned the Master Gardener program around in a handful of years. I recall being at those meetings when there was maybe, what, two, two master gardeners in Clay County and happy to see that has just grown so much, and they continue to meet the needs of the folks that are wanting to get involved in that. We did have an update from Cecilia on issues in the Northwest Region and the state. And those of you that have been around Extension for a variety of years know that Linda Kingery has been instrumental for over 20 years with the Northwest Regional Sustainable Development Partnership. She's been the executive director there for a long time. She is retiring, and there is an open house for her this Friday from 2:00 to 4:30 at the Ballroom in Crookston. So wish Linda well in her future endeavors. I did then, after that, attend the CAPLP Executive Director Review. We talked about the results of the survey given to the board on that. Continues to be favorable. Boylory just continues to grow that organization and meet the challenges and needs of the community there. We talked about compensation and merit recommendations that will be going to the full board at the end of this month. I then attended the fleet management conversation that Commissioner Campbell alluded to in terms of our fleet vehicles. I'm hopeful that this is one of those changes that will really save the county dollars in the end, and it appears with the information that we do have, it will be a considerable savings to the county, hopeful that we can maybe work with other, other arms of Clay County's services, maybe the Sheriff's Office and detox areas to continue to keep the financial obligation in that area as low as possible. After that, I attended the Buffalo Red Watershed Citizen Advisory Committee meeting in Barnesville. That committee has really not met for three years because of staff retirements and COVID. It's been a while since we've met on that. We did really have great updates on a handful of projects that are a priority for the Buffalo Red Watershed Management Area. They continue to do such a great job in terms of planning for project needs. They listen to the concerns of local township officials and areas and counties to hear where the problem areas for drainage may exist and work to have those projects ready should they secure any grant funding or funding from the state or federal areas. I'm hopeful that we have a couple of projects in Clay County that will finally be towards the lift stage, and it appears as though we have resident support for those, and so we'll see where those go forward. But thank you for the opportunity to serve in that capacity. Clay County's representatives are Wayne Brendemule, Sally Casey, Commissioner John Everett from Clay County, and Roger Hagland, myself, Tony Nelson, and Randy Shellack from the SWCD. The next, on Friday of last week, I attended a meeting with our, as Commissioner Campbell alluded to, with the city of Morehead to talk about our joint transfer site and needs and securing the contract on that. I know that we are really excited to be such vibrant partners in that build as we move forward operation next year, hopeful that we'll finally be able to lift that contract to the finish line in the next three weeks, so look for that. And as Commissioner Campbell talked about, we did talk about having an option to address any needs that may come up in three years. I felt like that was a good option to have on the table. Yesterday, I attended the ARPA committee meeting. We did have a recommendation from emergency services to help bolster some of the services that our rural emergency service providers continuing to do. I know that is a challenge area, and I think there's a standing committee within our committee assignments that can go to work through some of the growing pains with those organizations. But Gabe will gather some more information and hopeful that that will come to the sport as well. Last night, I attended the Buffalo Red Watershed Committee meeting, as I said, in Barnesville. We did talk about the ditch partial abandonment that the project on Seventh Street will result in. There is a proposed hearing on that on April 5th at 7:00 PM for any community feedback, and did talk about that Turtle Lake outlet piece. You know, that is a challenge. They did authorize amending operation and maintenance plans on that because of the DNR permit. We talked about Project 54, which is the Whiskey Creek Tributaries. There was a review on that. One big item that came out as they have new staff is that in around about 2008, they did a redetermination of benefits to County Ditch 47, which runs on the east side of the railroad on 50, County Road 52. As you come into Morehead, it goes around the interstate there, comes in past the petroleum tanks, and then kind of cuts up through Morehead. In 2008, they did a redetermination of benefits. They had viewers report on it. Everything was done. The work was paid for, but for whatever reason, it never was signed by the Buffalo Red Board of Managers. And so they've identified that. They're trying to find the best way to move forward on that. That really is something that needs to be done because they need to update parcels on that. That's kind of a headache for our auditor's office. So I did say that because we're doing work on County Road 52 this year, hopefully it's important to get all of important to get all of that up to speed, so they will work to make remedy that situation as soon as possible. No idea why they weren't able to identify in the minutes why it was dropped, but as Commissioner Johnson from Otter Tail County said, 2008 and the economy tanked and there were other priorities on the table, so maybe that's why. And, excuse me, we did have an update from the engineers on the 2022 spring flood outlook. As you know, that continues to be a moving target in terms of what the weather does in the next few weeks. The preliminary outlooks are that minor flood stage towards the valley, minimal in the Holly area and those gauges, and they will continue to monitor what the gauges do. And Wade Upstall has been very responsive in all of the prior floods and so we did, they did update the priority plans for when we are in a flood. Tonight, there is an important meeting here at 7:00 p.m. Matt Jacobson from our Planning and Zoning Department has really done so much work to get the recommendation to adopt our Clay County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. If you're available to attend this evening at 7:00 p.m. in this room, otherwise there is an option to tune in virtually. It also is at the same time, unfortunately, of the Legislative Town Hall with Representative Mark Art, Representative Keeler, and Senator Ekin. That's an important town hall that's available for citizens to hear what's going on at the Capitol. And then finally, I did have a lot of coordination with the mayor of Moorhead, Shelley Carlson, in coordination with the visit from Commissioner Grove, who will, we've been encouraging him to come for a long time. They are working with the chamber in terms of getting him here. There does seem to be a little bit of conflict in terms of how many are available to attend that one-hour meeting. I know that Steve had sent out a meeting notice of that and just wanting to make sure if any of you had identified that you could attend that, that's coordinate with Steve. They were asking to limit as many people as possible, but there is a further workshop on the previous day that all of us are welcome to attend. And that does conclude my report. Steve, do you have items?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday, I did attend Highway Tracking, that's been covered by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Gross. Later that day, had a department head evaluation on the ninth. We had county management, we talked about the new payroll system that's going to be rolling out on the eighth, encouraging again our staff to review their pay stubs for the next two payrolls. They're going to be running dual, dual programs. And again, I think one thing of note, I think last week when Darren spoke to us, he really undersold the amount of work that's gone into making that change. He and his staff have probably been working four or five hours a day over the last few weeks to get this in place. And so while we certainly are happy with what we believe are going to be the outcomes of switching programs, there's been a great deal of work that's gone into that. Participated both in the Finance Committee and Building Committee that morning that have already been covered by our commissioners. Thursday, worked with Colleen on the board preparation. That afternoon, I spoke to the Moorhead Kiwanis Club about update on Clay County and appreciate the opportunity to be before them to share what's happening here at the county. Again, met with the city of Moorhead on the 11th, which has been covered by Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Campbell. Again, that final document that we spoke about, that worked with Brian and Kirk Rosenberger and also MCIT has provided insight and guidance. And so that document has been provided to MCIT for one final review with the understanding that we hope to have that to the city of Moorhead by the end of March, early April. On the 11th, I met with Darren, Josh Hagam, our labor attorney from Pemberton Law. As Darren has mentioned, that we have nine bargaining units that are up for contract this upcoming year. And so probably in early May, end of April, we'll be coming before this board in closed session to get your guidance direction on moving forward with those contract negotiations. Yesterday, participated AMC Legislative Update. Matt, Matt and the policy analysts had provided feedback on where we are. It's been a busy week since we were down there. It's hard to believe, but the legislative session is half-done already. Matt indicated that there's really four main topics that have come forward over the last week. And when he looked at that, it was housing, workforce, public safety, and tax relief. I know that when we were down there last week, they'd said there was pretty quiet on tax relief, but they, that's something that's come forward. He did share that CPA and LGA is something that they are continuing to push forward. They know that that touches pretty much every one of our citizens and impacts our levy. They're optimistic that a bonding bill is going to get done this year still, but understanding that that's generally the last bill of the session that gets taken care of. Two points, two items that we talked about, a series of issues, but two points that we've talked about here. State housing, state holiday, gas tax was addressed. There currently is two house, there's a House bill and a Senate companion bill that would be looking at not having the gas tax from Memorial Day to Labor Day. They've anticipated that that would be between $200 and $300 million funding gap, but currently the plan is to cover that through reserves. The challenge that AMC has indicated is that we needed $200,000 to $300,000 on top of what we, they were already receiving through the gas tax, and so AMC is lobbying against that. Governor Walz has not come out whether or not he would support that tax, but he has signed on to a federal gas tax letter of support. So, and the other piece that this board has talked a great deal about and has pushed for is score funding. As we've talked about, 30% of the solid waste tax management dollars collected goes back to the general fund. There's legislation, both in the House and the Senate, that look to close that 30% gap and have all the money go back to the Solid Waste Environmental Group. They're looking at moving it in over a six-year process. AMC came forward and asked that that be moved from a six-year, six years to 15% each of the next two years. That amendment was approved and the Environmental Committee moved that forward on a 19-0 vote to the Tax Committee. Yesterday, we met also on the ARPA Committee, which has been covered by Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Campbell. I also had another department head evaluation and talked to Darren and Anna on some of the payroll challenges that they're having. Just wanted to touch base on a couple additional meetings that we'll be having. Our Clay County Association of Township Officers Meeting is going to be held next Monday at the Dilworth, Dilworth Community Center. The meeting starts at 8:30, presentations start at 9:00 and we'll have a number of departments there that'll be sharing as part of that meeting. The Chamber event that Commissioner Mojo mentioned is March 24th. It's 7:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. It'd be keynoted by Steve Grove, Dean Commissioner, but there'll be additional speakers. If you are wishing to participate in that, please let Colleen and I know and we will get you signed up. And then lastly, I mentioned last week, but we did clarify that we are going to move our rural cities and county meeting roundtable to April 19th. It'll be held at the same location, Law Enforcement Center from 4 to 6 p.m. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. We're all really busy. Brian, do you have a report?
Thank you, Commissioner Mojo. I did just want to praise the board. You may have seen it on the news that the Public Defender's Office across the state, the State Public Defender's Office has, as of last Thursday, it would have been March 10th, authorized going on strike. And then they have a 10-day cooling off period after that. If they were to go on strike, it would have a large impact across the state, but also here in Clay County, within the court system. I have not heard any updates as of today yet, where the negotiation's at, or they haven't, you know, found a settlement yet. I'm hopeful that we'll have a settlement before the end of the week and they would not go on strike. But if that was to happen, I expect that 10-day cooling off period by the 21st, Monday, the 21st, they would be on strike and they would have, we've been working hard to get the pandemic backlog brought down and everything else, but I think you would see a new backlog created and some other issues and problems that would occur. So it would be unprecedented if it happens, but it's possible, it could within the next week. So I just wanted to make sure, I'm sure the board maybe has already seen that on the news, but I thought I'd just bring it up.
Thank you. Anything else, Colleen? All right, thank you. We are adjourned.